All right, my commissioner. We missed one. Where's Dayline go?
I just sent it to our group text.
Dayline, just here. He's right there in the hall.
Oh, okay. You went missing on him.
Oh, no.
Well, I'm glad to see a crowd here today. If I can, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, public care is six oh one. If I could get approval of the agenda this time.
Second?
Second, all favor, huh? Mr. Rizner, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jason Rizner. I'm the county administrator and got a little presentation I'm gonna go through about House Bill five eighty-one, and then I'll be happy to try to answer any questions anyone might have, and then we'll open the floor for citizen comment. We do have a sign-in sheet if you haven't signed that. It's not necessarily indicating you want to speak. It's just indicating the presence. So that's there on the table. If you haven't had a chance to sign that, we'd appreciate it. To start, we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about what a floating homestead exemption is, how that works, the impact of our current evaluations, and then talk about this concept of opting out. And so, House Bill five eighty-one, the background on that. This was from the twenty twenty-four legislative session, so about a year ago. There were some legislators that were concerned about rising assessments on properties, the rising property taxes that kind of went along with that. The House and the Senate had different ways that they wanted to address it. They worked through those, and then on the very last night of the legislative session, House Bill five eighty-one, in its final form, passed, and then there was an accompanying resolution, H.R. ten twenty-two, that called for the public referendum that passed on that last night as well. Went before the voters in November of twenty twenty-four, and it was approved. The effective date was January first of this year, so the, so House Bill five eighty-one is currently in effect. There are three major parts of it. The one that I think everyone's most interested in and that we'll spend the most time on was the statewide floating homestead exemption. Two other pieces. There's a provision there that allows local governments to propose a referendum for an additional penny of sales tax, FLOST, they're calling that. And then there were some procedural changes to, to property taxes, laws that were incorporated as well. All right, so the first major component was that statewide floating homestead exemption. A floating homestead exemption is intended to, to offset or reduce the impact of the values of property going up. The, so the, the floating part means that it adjusts from year to year. So it's not a fixed exemption amount. So it's not a fifteen thousand dollar exemption or a fifty thousand dollar exemption. It varies or floats from, from year to year. And that's based on the, the current value of your property and the rate of inflation. So an example of how a, a basic float would work. So if you start out with a hundred thousand dollars worth of taxable value, one year later, so your value increases to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The, in a, in a basic floating exemption model, you would be taxed on the hundred thousand and not on the, the new hundred and ten thousand value. And so your exemption would be a ten thousand dollar exemption. If two years later, your, your property value climbs to one twenty-five, you're still, you're still back to the hundred thousand dollar value. Your exemption, your exemption amount floats from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, and so you, you get a twenty-five thousand dollar exemption. So that's how a straight floating exemption works. The exemption called for in House Bill five eighty-one was, had a little different twist to it. The increase, it, it had an inflationary adjustment factored into it. So, so same example, you start with the hundred thousand dollar value. So the rate of inflation is two percent. So one year later, your property's still worth a hundred and ten thousand, but rather than your value going all the way back to the hundred thousand, it, it increases by the rate of inflation. So it, it goes from one hundred to one oh two. So you're, you get an eight thousand dollar exemption. And the, the same deal year after year. So, so the increase in your property, it's not frozen, but it, it's gonna climb gradually with the, with that inflationary adjustment that's set by the state every year. So that's, that's the way the floating homestead exemption is set up in H.B. five eighty-one. It's a floating exemption with an adjustment for inflation. Okay, so just some additional info about House Bill five eighty-one. It has zero impact on existing homestead exemptions. So whatever we have in place right now stays in place. It, it doesn't impact that at all. The, the base year that's used under H.B. five eighty-one is the twenty twenty-four assessed value. The value does reset when a house sells or when there's a substantial property change, which is a term of art in the assessment field. The exemption can't be transferred to a new property. And then, so what you've heard about is the opt-out provision that was in the bill. So it, the bill gave each jurisdiction, city, county, school board, the opportunity to opt out of, of just that piece of it. And so it's an individual decision that each entity makes. So the school, school board could say, we're gonna stay in, and the city and county could say, hey, we're gonna opt out. So it, it's an individual decision to, to each political entity. The, the opt-out process involves three public hearings. This is the first one. We had originally scheduled the first one for, for last week when it snowed, and so we'll do a makeup on the, on the tail end of the process. You have to advertise the hearings in the newspaper and on the website at least a week prior to the hearing. And then at the end of the hearings, the county commission considers a resolution that would allow us to opt out. All of that has to be completed and everything delivered to the Secretary of State by March first. So the, the Board of Commissioners has voted to initiate that opt-out process. There's not, not a final decision on that until that resolution is passed. My date's there. We've got today, the, the fourth at five P.M. That'll be right before the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then the, the third hearing will be that Thursday, two six, at six P.M. So those will be the, the three hearings, and then I did this before the, the snow hit. So I, I need to go back and revise this. But, so the, the passage of the resolution, Chairman has talked a little bit about doing a call meeting on two six at six thirty to consider that resolution. So that's our, our schedule going forward. Just a few considerations for, for opting out. There's some concern about the current state of our digest and the values in that digest. There's concern about those being low. If, if, assuming that's accurate, and this exemption goes into place, the county would essentially be frozen at a, at a low level, and then it makes it tough to, to ever catch up. I mean, you, you would never get, never get to, to where you need to be in terms of values. And just wanted to mention, there's two aspects to, to calculating your, your taxes that you owe. One is the value, so that, that's certainly a consideration. The, the other is the millage rate. And so the, you know, if, if you have an increase in values, the Board of Commissioners always has the option to offset that by lowering the millage rate and keeping taxes in line with what they were previously. Even though your value's higher, millage rate could be lower, and your total tax bill would, would stay the same. The, the remaining provisions in this law, these are not affected by opting out or staying in. There's the, the FLOST. Now, this, take back what I just said. FLOST can be impacted by opting out or staying in. But FLOST is not something that, and I don't want to speak for the board members, but it's not something we've had, had discussion about to this point. And, but that's an additional penny sales tax. And so I, I think one of the motivating factors on the state level when they were looking at this was kind of shifting the burden from property taxes to more of a sales tax type setup. And so they did the, the, the floating exemption, but they also said, you know, counties, you can put before your voters the option of doing an additional penny. So if any, if any city elects opt out, opt out, the option's off the table. And that would be subject to voter approval. So, and it goes through the same process as some of our other, other sales tax items, like us FLOST, where we would negotiate with the city for a percentage and come up with projects and, and that type of thing. So it goes through that whole process, and then it goes to, to voters for approval. Again, there hasn't been any discussion amongst the board about FLOST, but that is something that was covered in the bill. And then the, the final, final major component, which is too small to read, these were some procedural changes related to administration of property tax. There, there will be some changes. You all receive a, a notice every summer that has your, your estimated taxes. As I understand the change on that, the form is gonna be updated, and instead of a estimated tax amount, you'll see an estimated rollback rate. So it's shifting from focusing on the, the dollar amount of the taxes to, to the, the millage rate. The, there was another change that allows the Board of Tax Assessors to directly appeal sales ratio studies rather than the Board of Commissioners having to appeal on their behalf. It requires the chief appraiser to ensure that every parcel is appraised at least every three years. There are some changes related to settlement conferences. If you appeal your valuation, you have to do that in good faith to get the fifteen percent reduction. And then the three-year lot provision was changed so that you only get that lot if you receive a value reduction when you appeal. So those are some procedural changes, again, not, not impacted by staying in or opting out.
What's with the reduction of your version?
So that may be more of a nuanced question for the tax assessor, but if you, if you go through and appeal your valuation, there's a, there, there's some type of way to go through the whole process, appeal your valuation, and you get a fifteen percent reduction in your value. That's sort of outside of anything I deal with on a regular basis. I'd be happy to get you more information on that.
So the notifications, you all send the deadlines, saying their deadline for appealing the, the changes in valuation.
Right.
That has an absolute, there's still a process in place?
Yes, that's right, that's right. In my understanding-
So why does that document you all send indicate that?
Well, the, the document is sent from the, the tax assessor's office, and it's a standard form that I, I think most everywhere in the state uses that same form. It's not, it's not something that we-
That, that form is, is very misleading because it gives the impression that it's written in stone, if you didn't get the bill and get the production, then you're stuck with it.
Okay.
That form comes from, straight from the state. It's not our form.
All right, at this point, Chairman, you want me to, any questions from the board? And then we can open it up for-
Or comments, I mean.
And then open it up for comments from the, from the public?
One thing y'all got to, you know, when this was brought to us, the actual author of the bill, five eighty-one, is urging people to opt out because this is not the bill that they presented to the state. This is the author of this bill. They're advising everybody to opt out because this is not the bill that they authored. It's been changed.
What's, what's the-
Hold on just a second.
You're not losing your homestead. You still have your homestead. You will not lose your homestead. We have taken, last four years, we've had rollbacks on, on property taxes. With this bill right here, you, you won't see any more rollbacks because we won't be able to roll back. Where we've been able to roll back now, it will, long-term effect, it, it, it's gonna kill us all as far as this county's ability to, all the way across the board, the way it's set up. The-
I can go on. Mr. Kishen, you want, you, you had a nice set of notes that we'd, you wouldn't know I wouldn't have my notes with me right now.
Yeah, I think, I think one of our biggest issues with it is, is the inequities that it creates from where we are now. So we have, based on this, the only increase that would go to your property valuation now is, is whatever the C.P.I. is. So if that's two percent, and it's capped at, I think, three percent is that right, Jason? So, so I think it's two to, two to three percent a year that you can increase. So if-
We're, we're gonna get opportunity to ask questions. So, I mean, just bear with me. Go ahead and let the commissioners in, and you'll have plenty of time to talk, I promise you.
So I'm, I'm presented in, in a subdivision format so that you're, you're looking at, say, five houses in a, on a street that are, that were built similar times, similar construction, similar age, similar lot sizes, all that kind of stuff. So we're talking about comparable houses. So if one has been there for ten years and has not sold, it's, say it's a hundred thousand dollars. Another one has sold five years ago for a hundred and fifty. One sold last year for two hundred thousand. You now have houses valued at a hundred, a hundred and fifty, and two hundred thousand, all neighbors, all similar-sized houses. Those are inequitable taxes. You're paying more than your neighbors paying. If you're paying the two hundred thousand, you're paying a lot more than your neighbors paying for the same type, same size, same kind of house. That's the inequities that we're talking about. When you have this in your tax base, and they limit you to two percent a year that you can increase this one, and both of them increase at two percent, you're never getting your inequities in line from the, from that until you sell. The other thing that it hurts is when you sell your house, all this is out the window. So it's based off the tax, the sale price of your house. So if yours is limited, your tax exemption is limited for where you're at now based off the C.P.I. going up every year, and then you sell your house, first-time homeowner, homeowner, new buyer, whatever it is, buys that house. Whatever they buy that house for is your new tax value. And that's where your two percent starts every year to increase. What, what we've done in the past is we know that our budget, our line item budget, that has to be brought in from the taxes. So for at least the last four years, I believe it's been seven years that, and our finance director's here that can, can verify, but I believe it's been at least seven years that we roll back to exactly what we brought in the year before so we don't increase the taxes that the taxpayers are paying to the county. So their, their tax bill doesn't increase. It's rolled back to the same level that it was the year before. So your value's going up, but the dollar amount you pay to us, to the, to the county every year for taxes stays the same because the millage rate reduces to equal out the value. So your house went up, millage rate went down, so you're still paying the same thing every year. And that's what we're looking at with this. This takes that ability out of our hands and puts it into a bill that was passed at the state level. And I'm just gonna be blunt. The state and the federal government always says, we need home rule. We need the local governments deciding what's best for local people because our, Jones County is not like Atlanta. Jones County's not like Twigs County. Jones County's not like Bibb County. So for somebody in Atlanta or somebody in the federal government to say, everybody in the state of Georgia should have the exact same assessment values, I mean, the assessments, the exact same percentages of your values, is not, in our mind, is not fair and equitable. And so that's where, when the state normally tells you, we want it to be home rule and we want you guys to make this decision, and then they come in and say, well, here's something that we think is better for everybody. The same shoe doesn't fit everybody, and that's what we're saying. And that's what the study that was sent out last November, I think seventy-three percent of the counties in Georgia had, had said they were gonna opt out. Seventy-two percent of the school boards had said they were opt out because it basically handcuffs us, ties our hands when it comes to being able to roll back taxes so that the burden doesn't fall on the taxpayers.
Mr. Wood, you got anything else?
I agree with what y'all have said. It's, you know, this county is looking at some values that are not equitable and uniform across the county, and this would tie our hands forever setting that straight. And so, and it, I went to the school board meeting where they had some gentlemen there talking about this bill, and kind of woke me up when the, when they mentioned the author of the bill is urging everyone to opt out because it's not what he presented, introduced. So now he's against his own piece of legislation. And so I was like, okay, we need to look at this, and we look at it hard. And so that changed my mind on the, and I'm, you know, we're opting out of it.
Commissioner, Lauren?
The sad part about the bill is it locks you in, so there is no opting out. We asked if we could fix our situation in the county and then opt in because that would have been ideal if we had a county-wide reevaluation and all the values were set, and then we could lock in. That would have made sense to us, and I think that would have been highest and best. But there was not an option for that. So we had one deadline to look at and not many options, and we thought this was the best option. So for that reason, it was a no-go for me.
Sir, you want to come forward and introduce yourself? Just for the record, so we've got to introduce you and your address.
Ty Clement's, longtime resident of Jones County. Now, I've, I've heard you all's side of this. My side of this is limiting tax increases to the rate of inflation sounds mighty doggone good. Last year, my property taxes went up about thirty percent. The year before that, my property taxes went up about thirty percent. This is getting kind of old. I would like to see some limitations in the amount that you all can increase my property taxes. You sit there and you crunch the numbers on ten grand over four years, thirty grand over ten years. That's excessive. The fact that some guy escapes New York or escapes California or escapes Colorado and comes down here and pays a crazy number for a home doesn't mean that every home in the neighborhood or every home in the county can be evaluated at, at that level. My house is thirty years old, close to thirty years old. It's a nice piece of property, but it's an old house. I shouldn't have to come up here and fight with you all over a thirty percent tax increase for, for multiple years. That's crazy. So when I read this bill, I'm like, doggone. If they're gonna limit the increases to the rate of inflation, that sounds mighty fine to me. The way I'm looking at it, well, do you all intend to provide equity in terms of limiting the increases? Or do you all want to get the rates? What I'm hearing you say is you want to make sure you increase the rates higher before you level them off.
It's not the rates that we want to increase.
Look, I don't care if it's C.P.I. or how y'all say the amount that I'm betting at the end of the year is going up.
You gotta let me talk, though. So it's not the rate that we need to get right. We need to get the home values right. So your home value, I don't, I'd love to know where you live because-
The only thing that, that concerns me is how much I have to pay you guys at the end of the year. All these equations that you're using for the C.P.I. or the home value?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about home value. So, that's where he lives? All right, so he didn't go up thirty percent for three straight years. All right.
It went up two years.
Okay, it went from one eighty-nine in twenty twenty-three.
No, I, I paid-
One eighty-six, one eighty-nine, and two thirteen. Now, I do math, and math is my thing. So you're definitely not thirty percent. You might be twenty percent the first year, and then the second year you went up thirty percent.
Twenty-seven hundred, right at twenty-eight hundred I paid this year. I paid two thousand last year, but the year before that I paid-
You probably was late or something because it doesn't add.
I don't pay late. I pay right at the end of the year.
Once again, sir, your taxes was one eighty-six, then one eighty-nine, then two thirteen, your home value. So we're-
You're saying the value, I'm saying the taxes.
And that's my point. We're talking about the values. We need to make sure that the home values across the county are at the right levels. I'm not talking about C.P.I., I'm talking about home values. So my home value went up thirty percent, right? And I'm okay with that because I know my house is worth four hundred thousand dollars. So by the fact that the county went up and got my numbers about right, that's okay. There's some other homes in the neighborhood. Maybe Dr. Gray's house, whose house should probably be about a million because he's got an elevator in it and he's twice as big as my house with a hundred acres, might not be at the right value. Because it's not at the right value, we cannot lock this in, into the House Bill five eighty-one. If the values were correct across the entire county, we would happily lock it in.
So you believe that everybody's house is worth a huge amount more because one or two people have been for-
No, not at all. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is there are some homes that have not been evaluated and some that are at the wrong levels. We need to get them all correct.
So when my tax bill went to twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred from two thousand, and it went to two thousand from about fifteen, fourteen, you all consider that normal? That's not two percent, that's not three percent. So having it limited to inflation sounds really nice to me.
I think-
And, and- He, he doesn't get it, but not-
I get it.
No, you don't, because the house values, if the house values were the same-
Given a bunch of inflated values. People move to Jones County, it's a home. It's not for flipping, it's not of any-
Well, the flips have happened, so, and that's the issue, that the flips have happened in Kingsview Village.
So you're gonna punish the entire community because of the flips.
Homes have gone from seventy thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, and we have not caught those. And because of that, if we locked in your rate, we would not be able to cover services. So we, if you want us to lock the rate right now, if we locked it in with five eighty-one, I guarantee you those six hundred roads and the people that come in here for roads won't ever get them done. The firefighters won't ever get paid because we will not have the money from the services to cover it.
I'm one of the people that, I don't want the services because I know with the city services come the city taxes.
We're not in the city. I'm looking out for the entire county.
And that's, I don't want to be in the city. My, my bottom line is the rates should be limited. Having you all come and tell a person that their property taxes double over a couple of years is insane. When you read a bill that says it's gonna limit the inflation, limit the increases to inflation, that sounds mighty good to me. And if you're gonna opt out, then maybe you all need to give people a really clear explanation as to why you want to opt out. And so far, I'm not hearing it. I'm listening. I'm listening carefully. You're talking home values, I'm talking how much I'm paying in taxes.
And, and-
You won't-
Unfortunately, sir, I own probably seven houses, which is small compared to some other people. So I pay those taxes over and over again, and all of them went up. Some of them I contested because I wanted to see the process. Some of them were probably right. But the reality is that we need to get our homes at the correct value, and they're not.
Well, I own one, I own one house, and it's my home, not an investment.
Great.
It's, it's not for you all to shake, turn me up, tie down, shake every penny you can out of me because you think it's worth more than, uh-
It's not about what I think, it's about what is right. And the sales ratio from the state, the state has come in, and they've done their assessment, and they're saying that we're off by about point eight percent. So if we're off by, well, I'm sorry, not point eight, but eight percent, then the reality is we have to make the adjustment or get penalized. That's the state telling us that we're below the sales ratio value. That's the state. So if you have an argument with the state, go to the state.
So if, well, they don't govern me, you all do.
Well, then you understand that- Well, then you understand that because-
If they're saying-
If they say that we're low, and we're low, then there's a penalty for us being low.
If, if they have the information to say there's an eight percent difference, then they've also done the appraisals or whatever they need to do to evaluate the properties, right?
They've done that based on ourselves.
Anything else?
They've done that based on ourselves, and we're low. So until we get the properties at the right value, which is forty percent, we're still gonna be low, and we can run into the situation of being assessed per parcel. What, what's the fee per parcel?
So basically, the bottom line is, you all are contesting that you want to opt out because you all want to increase the values of the properties in the county.
What is the assessment? Listen to this. Listen to this.
Commissioner Martin's saying is, there's a lot of uniformity issues and inequities in this county, and in the peer review, it's detailed. There are houses that are overvalued in places in this county, and there are houses that are undervalued in this county. This House bill, if we pass it, is gonna prevent us from having a county-wide reevaluation and fixing these issues, and it's-
And, and this reevaluation's come over the state.
I sat in a class-
Another simple question. If, if we're in such terrible conditions, some are overvalued, some are undervalued, what are you all gonna do to actually remedy the situation and make sure everything is praised, uh, praised?
County-wide revaluation?
Yeah, if you've, if you've, if you've been listening the last two years now, we are, we're about to do a county-wide, hire somebody to do a county-wide, every piece of property in this whole county will be reevaluated because they're not right. And, and we are being told by the state for two years, they're not right, and if you don't fix it, we're gonna penalize you. And it's, it's as simple as that, and that's, that's the problem we have with this House bill here. I, I'm gonna go back. You said your, your house values went up as a board?
I, I did not say my house values went up. I said my property taxes went up. Every time. My property taxes went up.
His house value increased from one eighty-three to one eighty-six to two hundred and sixteen. Sir, your house value went up.
I'm not worried about what you all say about the value, just because some guy moves here from New York and overpays.
I don't, I don't know what he's talking about, but-
That can be triggered by an override and not by the uniform tables across the county. I don't know.
Today, looking at the Tax Assessor's website,
Right.
the value of his home increased, and as such, he, he experienced a tax increase, as many of us did, some of us. But it is what it is. And, and, and sir, I understand what you're saying, because I don't like it. I would love our, the ability to cap the most, the amount that we could go up in taxes every year.
And that's what this bill does.
Until we get the values right, we cannot do it.
Did, question for you. Did you appeal your taxes this year?
I, I, I did do the paperwork for the appeals, but I worked real hard, and I wasn't made to make the, uh, appointment for the, whatever thing.
So, so state, state law requires we have your taxes assessed by the Tax Assessor's Office. Then, we set our millage rate based on that, so if the values went up, we rolled the millage rate back so that your taxes didn't increase from last year. Unless your house value went up, or you built something on your property. So, what we did as a board, the only thing we can do within our power based on state law is to roll the millage rate back, so your value per dollar, the amount you pay to us that you're talking about, is exactly the same as it has been for the last four or five years. We did not increase your taxes one bit. Your house value went up, you paid the percentage on the value of your house, so our percentage didn't change. Your value went up means your house is worth more than it was. I got another question, last question for you. Would you sell your house for what it's valued at right now?
Yes. You wanna buy? I'm, I wanna go to, uh, Gordon anyway.
Right here.
Their, 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 uh, values aren't as crazy as they are here. The cars don't come with. And that's another question. Why do y'all have my personal property on that site with my cars?
It's public record. Everybody's, yes. Mine, yes. Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean. You pull it up on the Tax Assessor's website. Anybody in the county, it's public information.
So my old, my, my collection is public information?
Everything that's on the picture of your, of your property.
Alright, well, obviously, this is wasted breath. Oh, yeah.
Anyone else like to come forward? Sure, come on. Introduce yourself. Let us know where you live.
Okay. My name is-
We can hear you. There we go.
My name is Christine Daniels. I live at two eighty Stone Gap Drive, right down the street from you.
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Um, if I understand what I hear currently, the main reason that y'all have decided to opt out, or one of the reasons anyway, is because of the situation with the Tax Assessor's Office. So if we didn't have that situation, you wouldn't be opting out, or I, I'm just curious?
If we were equitable, just like Commissioner Martin said, which we're not, the states come in, if you, if you've been filing a paper, everything, state has come in, and, and we have failed to, to meet the qualify, qualifications tremendously. In fact, for the, for the record, this, you know, I think we're averaging sixty dollars a square foot right now, and a lot of the houses, you can't, one thirty is the median, meaning the highs and lows, and you could, I couldn't build one for one thirty right now. But, uh-
I totally understand what you're saying, but until property values are what they should be, the bind that this would be drawn in. I get it. I just hadn't heard that part of it before.
Yes, ma'am, and that's-
The situation with the Tax Assessors was a major reason why you decided to opt out.
For our county it is. It's not in that situation for everyone, but, but you're exactly right. This, this bill required us to opt in by March first, and we talked and said, if we can get our values leveled, if we can get the assessment problems in our county fixed and get, get this out of it, then that would be a much better deal for us, for, for the county and for the taxpayers. But they said, no, you got till March the first to make a decision. You opt in or you opt out. If you opt in, you're in forever.
And it's based on twenty-twenty-four values, which we know are out of whack.
Based on the state saying you're out of whack.
Chris, didn't you say that, um, Mr. Wagner?
That's fine. This is Chris.
Um, that, um, some high percentage of counties are indicating that they're going to opt out?
Yes.
And they don't all have this situation with their-
Right, and like I said-
So are there others?
I'm gonna be honest with you. When that, I'm gonna be perfectly honest, when it, when it hit the ballot, I voted for it. But when I got the, everything that was in there that we, you know, that the author of this bill, uh, advised us to opt out because this is not the bill, he, what they added to it and what they've done to us, absolutely. I mean, you, you didn't, I didn't get all that information. That's why I'm saying, I, I actually voted for that. I said, but number one, we're not compliant with the state right now. We, we've got to get everybody right there together. We've got to educate the people, let them know what's going on. We've had to do a county-wide, wide revow to fix the trouble we're in right now with the, with the, uh, state. But like I tell everybody, twenty-eight million, I think, is our budget?
Twenty-nine last year.
Twenty-nine million?
Right around twenty-nine.
We get all the houses, all equitable in their values, and let's say the tax digest comes in at ninety million dollars. We don't need ninety million dollars. Right now, Jones County has got one of the highest millage rates in the state. But if we can get our values equitable, and it comes in at, let's say, uh, ninety million, we can roll that millage rate back, 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 back down to twenty-nine million. What does that do? That brings your va, your tax bill equitably to where it would've been, I mean, that's, that's the only plain English way I know to do it. Like, we don't need ninety million.
Millage rate goes way down. I, I sat in a class up in North Georgia, and I sat with a wide array, from fire chiefs to county administrators to other commissioners. Over lunch, we talked about values. I asked, how are, how are your values in your county? This was in June of last year, so we've been working on this a long time. They said, our values are pretty much within a couple thousand dollars of what a house sells for. There's no despairing gap. I said, what's your millage rate? Knowing what ours is. I said, what's your millage rate? And one gentleman said, ours is six. I said, so you're multiplying number that goes, all that matrix of numbers is well less than half of what Jones County is, and they were like, yeah, and people don't complain. We have a few appeals, but our values are within a very tight of what things sell for in this county because our tax guy is doing his job. And I was like, wow, okay. We got some work in Jones County to do.
We got a lot of work.
Yeah, and I guess my question though is, um, if there's so many counties that want to opt out that don't have the issue that we have, then why are they opting out? I mean, I think what we're trying to understand is why are we opting out, and-
Right.
And I understand
Right.
what y'all say, but, but if y'all are saying that, well, if, if we didn't have this situation, our, our values were equitable and everything's what it should be, we might not opt out, but there are a lot of counties that you've indicated-
I don't know why they're opting out. I know why we're opting out, because we're not compliant with the state right now.
And I, over sixty percent of the counties in Georgia have the issue that we have with inequities in their county. And most of it comes from COVID. Most of it, when our market went crazy in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, when the housing market went insane, everybody was wanting to buy, and just like you said, they were spending, they were paying twice what the said value of the property was, because there was nothing on the market to buy. People were paying outrageous prices. Well, when you have, like I said, three houses side by side, ones at a hundred, ones at two hundred, ones at three hundred, just because somebody was crazy enough to pay that for them, well, you now have that value in your system. You've got a one hundred, a two hundred, a three hundred. For now, the state to come in, which is why they put this bill in, was to try to cap that insane market in twenty-one and twenty-two. We've made that curve now and stopped with the insane sales, so now the bill is no longer in effect, or effective for us, because we do have this in housing. We have some that are undervalued, some that are way overvalued, and some that are right. But our percentage of those that are undervalued compared to overvalued is what the state says we're out of whack on. And the state says, you've got to fix that. They do a random sampling that you're supposed to be at forty percent taxed value of your assessment value, and we're not, we're nowhere near it. You know, our last one this year, we, we moved up to thirty-two point seven. You gotta be between thirty-eight and forty, uh, thirty-six and forty-four, with forty being where you need to be, and we're nowhere near it.
So you're saying that there are a lot of counties that have this problem, maybe not for the same reason that we have it, but that have this problem about values?
Have their problem with the values, ma'am. Yeah.
But the other reason that people or other counties may not wanna opt out is because there are costs that may go higher than the inflationary value. And theoretically, if they were behind on water and sewer, or some other infrastructure, they might have to raise property values to address those needs. May not be our case, but there are a lot of counties that are in that situation.
Well, I read this document pretty thoroughly, and it talks a lot about, I understand what y'all say about our property values, about the long-term effects of this bill. And, uh, whether that's true or not, I guess time will tell, but, uh, okay. I just have one, I think, one more question.
Absolutely.
Those of us seniors that plan on living in our house, can we check out? I'm sort of like him. You know, it sounds wonderful to me, um, but I know it's gonna happen anyway, but, um, I read, I was reading over the, um, list that's on your website about, um, the exemptions that are available. And the only one that I could find that's available for us old folks is that if you're over sixty-two years of age, you, uh, qualify for an additional fifteen thousand dollar exemption on, uh, I guess it's the school.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you have to apply for?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we don't know that. I mean, I don't even know if I have it.
Sure.
Look that up on your little computer, Miss Roddy.
I can't. The exemptions are not included.
There's, on the, on the Tax Assessor's web-
Well, I know it's, but who reads the website? The, the residents need to know. It's just like home state exemption. I bet there are people that don't have it, home state exemption. I know that don't even know what home state exemption means, and so they don't go apply for it. So, what we're eligible for, uh, we need to know about better than putting it on the website.
Actually, what, about eight months ago, we had a gentleman kept asking about that same exemption, and it, I think it was about eight months ago. It was ironic. He came to us three times, and he's saying, Mr. Chairman, I voted for you. Why can't you fix it? I, I explained to him, it's, it's a school exemption that you're talking about fifteen thousand. You can go to the Tax Assessor's Office and, and apply for it, and, uh-
Can they tell me if I have it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. They can tell you at the counter in the Tax Assessor's Office.
Alright, um, and the only other thing I had is much is mentioned in this handout about, um, that one of the drawbacks, a major drawback, a fatal flaw is, uh, addressing, addressing, uh, curbing expenses. Not, and I'm not saying y'all don't try to curb expenses. Don't take it that way. But, uh, it talks a lot about that a fatal flaw of this bill was that there's no provision to curb expenses, requirements to curb expenses. And as a longtime resident, I, I certainly would expect and hope that that is being done. You know, and not just, okay, we need, need the million dollars, and we're gonna get it one way or the other.
I think I've been on the board twelve years, and we haven't raised taxes, and as a general rule-
As far as raising the millage rate, you're saying?
Right, and I think that as a board generally, definitely over the last two terms, they've made a, a huge effort to find reductions, um, whether it be revising bonds to reduce the rates, um, some consolidation of, of resources, and, and finding better ways. We have not done anything, and we've rolled the millage rate back seven years, so been a good stewards. I don't think we've been crazy.
I'm not saying you have it.
I'm, I'm just saying that that's a track record.
There are a lot of people we've talked to in this county that would disagree that, that their taxes have not gone up significantly for the last few years, and I, I appreciate your time.
Hey, and you, no, you can call me anytime. I got a young lady at the back's got her hand up first, please.
I'm new to this, so-
Okay, if you'll just introduce yourself and where you live at.
I'm a girlie full of love. I live at thirty-three eighth, Christine Court.
Okay.
Okay, I have seven sons. Just, you tell her the age is sixty-two. I called last year. I'm sixty-five and married.
Sure.
And they told me John County don't exempt that. I called. I don't have no one in school, and I asked, and I was told by the tax that, no, you all don't honor that.
We, we, you have an exemption, yes.
Well, she told me, no, I didn't.
And I'm sorry you're, you're-
Because I didn't get it, because I had a friend of his, a college student. She's the one that told me about it. And when I called up here, and I was told, no, you have to, this is something John County don't exempt. She did tell me that, because my taxes went up at twelve hundred dollars. I paid twelve hundred dollars more last year. I know property taxes go up. Property, you say my home is valued at four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So you're gonna do my property tax according to what's bad in my home. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so you really think I can sell the house for four hundred fifty thousand dollars to me?
No, ma'am.
You say my house is, you go and tell me what my house is worth. You telling me what it's worth, but ain't no way in the world I'm getting a four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that's a way to get money.
Not intentionally, but that's the unintentional effect of not having the county-wide reevaluation. And the idea behind it is to make sure that property values are equal and just or equitable around the county.
Because I'm living in the neighborhood. All these houses been built back in, what, two thousand, two thousand four, and, and it's nothing new in the other state. They have the property value, whatever they come in. They have too many houses around there. But my concern is, how can you get behind on property value? How can, is that something you assess every year? Property value, you send people, physically send people out?
They're, physically, the people are supposed to be sent out. Theoretically, they're supposed to assess the, the properties every three years, and sometimes that didn't happen, and I think during COVID-
Okay, sometimes it didn't happen.
Yeah, I think during COVID, we really got behind, um, and I'm not making excuses, but the reality is not, not being staffed, COVID, and then the explosion of people buying properties above values is what triggered it.
So then you're coming back on the taxpayers, us?
So if we get it-
You're coming back on us.
If we get it right by a county-wide reevaluation, it should be equitable for everybody.
So how long do you think that's gonna take?
It depends on-
Y'all have to hire people to get people and stuff, so that people need jobs, and I'm quite sure their job paid pretty decent or salary.
I'm sure it does.
Commissioner Martin, can you elaborate on the school that she needs to- Commissioner Mark, can you elaborate on the school that she needs to look into and why we?
You're sitting next to people in the back who can tell you exactly how to do it. I'm not an expert and I'm not sixty-two. I can't wait to get there.
But I did call. I called. I called my girlfriend. So why are you paying this school tax? You don't have anyone in school. Why are you paying? And I had the middle, she said, and I called and I was told by the clerk, no, it don't apply. This is something John County cannot do.
Not you.
No, I called, I called, I called.
You told the tax office and you were missing form. I'm sorry. There is a.
See, I paid something I could have been out of last year. So I do have a form, that a yellow form. I'm gonna tell her, I'm gonna come over here and that don't help me.
All right, thank you. Cause they can help you.
So it do apply that I can get in that.
Not completely off, but it, you have an opportunity, like the young lady said, to, at age sixty-two, you, you can go and you get a fifteen thousand dollar deduction, I think, on it. And it is available, yes.
Well, I'm gonna say about that cause I'm, I'm sixty-three when I called her. I'm sixty-four.
I'm sorry, you're missing form, like I said.
Okay, so you saying you are working on trying to assess all this property then?
And we're gonna have more work sessions.
Who was there two years ago that I told you, but I hope she's better educated now.
No, it was last year.
Oh, last year, I'm sorry.
But that was my concern, you know, you say the value of my home and ain't no way I can sell the house in another thing. I'm gonna just say something here. The kind of taxes we paying out in my neighborhood, Hampton Lake, we're all roads so to pull. You come out there, we calling you all, you come out there and put some gravel down in there. Soon it rains, it's back at the same point. They need to resurface that whole road, the main road coming into Hampton Lake. That need to be addressed. DOT or whoever, I need to talk to someone about that. And also they used, when I moved out, I moved out there in two thousand and nine. And they just come and cut the side. John's kinda owned it from the road to the lake. It just all, nobody just not paying attention. It's gonna be a bad accident coming to the end of that road. You got bushes over it and you can't see. People just coming around and you can't see the next person. So that need to be addressed also.
All right, I'll look into that.
Roads and then cutting back so we could be able to see the next car coming. So I appreciate it. And like I said, this is my first time. I get a little nervous. I hope we can share some, so I try to do some of this stuff. I fall up on them.
I thought you looked familiar.
Ma'am?
Not that, not that I'm dealing with shares.
I'm sorry.
If you go to the tax assessor's site under forms.
I'm like her, honey. I'm gonna come down here and let her, she'll be able to do it for me.
There is a form. They, they can't say you're not eligible because there's the form right there for you to get that. It's the Jones County, Georgia Tax Assessor dot com site.
We started to have this problem about eight months ago.
And it's right, it's, it's under forms. When you go to their website. Yes ma'am, Jones County, Georgia Tax Assessor. You want me to write it down for you?
Cause I did, I did call. Cause I, my girlfriend, she live in Spotsboro. She'll pay them. She just.
We know we had a problem. Like I said.
And I'm saying, okay, she told me, no, they didn't apply.
I mean, they may have some additional.
And you have to march, the first of March is something to do that.
I'm not sure. But, but you'll go to this website, go to forms, and then there's a senior, school, tax. Affidavit.
You, you, I'm sorry that you're.
I knew that was.
Like I said, it brought to our attention about eight months ago. Thank you. Come, I hope you come again. Young man right there, come on.
Hi, my name's Ferris Webb. I live in Strong Gables also. On the market value versus the state, what is the formula like figuring for a square footage, what your house is worth? Because this point I'm making is that I can build a house on Strong Gable Drive a lot cheaper than I can in Apple Road. So how do they balance that statewide as far as assessing my value?
So they don't. They, they, they assess it based on the county that you're in. So, so they do a sales state study, sales ratio study from your county. They don't do a statewide sales ratio study. So it's, it's dedicated to the area that you're in. So when you say, how do they assess or how they evaluate houses?
Yes, I just say using a term, one hundred and thirty dollars a square foot.
That's for Jones County. That's, that's not a hundred.
That's our medium right now. The state says we need to be at, and if you ask any real estate agent, you're probably at one fifty or better right now.
They're not saying a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot in, in Atlanta.
Okay, I, I know that was just a normal.
Sure.
Yeah.
Where do you, excuse me?
I was gonna say, they're backing into basically, when, when you have sales ratios of houses that are valued at what they sell for, they're at the forty percent mark. That's the percentage they're looking for. So when they're looking at that, and then you take the square footage and divide it by the sales price or the value, if, if they're close to the same, and you get the hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty dollars per square foot, that's where you're saying, okay, you can build a house and you can sell a house for a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot. That's, that's where you want to be. That's the happy medium. But if you're saying you're selling it at sixty dollars a square foot is what they're valuing it at, and you're selling it for a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot, your tax value versus your house value are, are way different. And that's where you gotta be in that same range based on the state guidelines.
Cause I know with the whole thing, as far as a senior that I am, the inflation rate, the COVID sounds great to me. I mean, my next stop is the box of the year, you know, so. That's just, that's just a comment. The exemptions that we can apply for with Board of Education, have we passed the deadline to apply for that for this year, this coming twenty twenty-five, I mean?
I'm trying to see.
I know for homestead exemption, it used to be March. And I forget moved back to like January one, didn't it?
If y'all go to the tax assessor's office and, and they can't get the information for you, if you'll call me, I can give you a phone number too. Get it?
I don't see a deadline on the form itself. I'm sure there is a deadline. I just don't see it on the form to be able to tell you when it is.
Y'all get down there and you, you can't get your questions answered, you can call me.
Okay.
Some of y'all actually got, you know, both my phone numbers. So call me, you know, on either one of them. And then, you know, we'll get your answers, your, your questions answered for you.
Okay. And along with this exemption for education, I ran across some information and it's kind of great. Double exemption for seniors. I saw one place I thought it says sixty-two and another one says seventy. Anything to that for state. Of properties.
That would be more detailed question for the tax assessor's office to answer.
Right.
Cause those get in really specific criteria based, some are based on income, some are based on disabilities, if you're veterans, different things like that.
That's about all I got. I'm just looking for, keep a way out.
I understand. We all are.
And I want, I mean, you said, our budget's twenty-nine million. Does anybody ever look at, do you need twenty-nine million? Do you look at line items?
Oh yeah.
You don't.
That young lady sitting right at that desk right there.
You don't say, look at what it was last year and give it ten percent more?
We look at, no, sir, we look at five years in, in.
I've been in industry and I've done budgets and I know how some of it works. And I can't believe that.
That young lady right there sitting at that desk is doing, doing a great job.
Every department, every year looks at a five-year trend. And we also look at every department, every line item, every budget, every dollar. It's looked at every line item all the way down the list and each department's looked at every year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Hand out, this thing that I printed off of your website says that.
Come on, everybody back home, back home. Come on, you're fine. Stay up here because people's watching online. They, they. Oh yeah.
This, this thing about the sixty-two and older is considered a part of homestead exemption. And it says that it must be filed between January first and April first of the year for which you want to claim the exemption. So it sounds like to me, you have until April first. April the first.
But go and check on it. Like I said, if, if you don't get any, you, you don't get your questions answered, we'll, we'll be glad to look into it for you. Anyone else?
Chairman, can I mention one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
So she was asking earlier about counties that their digest may be in a good place and, but they're still looking at opting out. And I think a, as I was thinking about that, I think a real benefit to, to opting out is, you know, at, at any time, this board could decide that they want to pursue any type of exemption. And they could craft it any, any way they wanted to. It could be a, a floating thing with the base year. It could, you know, it could be a, a certain dollar amount. Any, any way the board decided they wanted to craft that. And they could have their legislative, have our legislative delegation introduce a bill in the state house and it would go through. And, and so rather than have the state sort of dictate how the exemption looks and dictate that we're, we're stuck with this year's value, I think opting out kind of gives, gives the board the flexibility to look at it going forward. And, you know, and if, if they saw fit at some point in the future, they could, could tailor an exemption, you know, however they wanted to. So I mean, that, that option is always out there. And just wanted to throw that out there and not, you know, I, I think opting out just gives you that flexibility down the road. So just out of curiosity and probably to help some of our audience, if we did the countywide reevaluation and we got everything set, we could legislate or, or ask for the ability to manage our increases by CPI value or inflation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
Anyone else from, just a comment?
Chairman, I have one comment. I think it was Ms. Glover. I, I thought I heard you ask about cell phone numbers or telephone numbers. Yep. And I think they're still out on the board, right? And on the lobby out here, there's a board that has every one of our cell numbers on it. It's also on the website, our, our cell number, our email. And I think we probably got cards around here. So it may be cards out there on the desk that have everybody's, everybody's number on.
I think Ms. LaVita might be getting ready to go and get some cards for you. But don't hesitate to call us. I mean, that's what we're here for. Anything else? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Oh, fair enough. Wait, we got one more motion. Happy birthday to you. We do this as a, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Kitchens. Happy birthday to you.
My birthday wishes was.
Didn't y'all get me on my birthday?
Nah, I don't know what you're talking about.
Ah, yeah.